Test, test, test. Test, test, test. There we go. Ready?
All righty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Work Session. It is Wednesday, May 29th. It is 6:00 PM. We have four members of council present this evening. Councilmember Chud now is absent. Mr. Cobb, I see that we have item number one, but we're waiting for our presenter on that item. So why don't we move on to item number two, which is the discussion of election voting locations.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes. At your March 25th work session, you gave us direction to open up three polling locations in the upcoming election in November. They were Live Oak Reserve, the Community Center, and then Riverside Park and Oviedo City Hall. We've encountered some issues at Riverside that's going to require some construction. And that construction appears to not going to be completed in time for Riverside to serve as a polling location. So what we'd like to do is get your direction to replace Riverside with the Jim and Aquatic Center. So that would give us Live Oak Reserve, the Jim and Aquatic Center, and Oviedo City Hall. And we ran that by the election supervisor. He's on board with it. The cost for those three polling locations is approximately $22,010, which is right in the same range as it was for the other ones. So we just need your direction as far as moving the polling location from Riverside to the Jim. That's all we need.
Have we contacted the church, maybe, on Lockwood? Just moved down the road?
The Presbyterian Church?
Mm-hmm.
No, we did not.
Could we do that before we make this decision?
We can, yeah.
Just make it convenient for those folks up and down Lockwood who are used to going through one of those two locations? Is everybody okay with that one?
Do we know for sure that we won't be done at Riverside Park?
We don't believe it will. Given the bidding process and the time that it's going to take to do the improvements to the roof line, it just doesn't seem like we're going to be ready.
Yeah, I would say try the church because they're all, that's like the second biggest one over there, so.
All right, just bring it back to us at a council meeting. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Let's move on to item number three then, letter of interest to purchase city-owned property.
Kelly, can you reach the G-Drive?
Hmm? Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we were seeking direction on, if you see the property there on the map that's in the red, that is a former construction and demolition landfill that the city purchased in 2009. We have a tenant on that property who recycles concrete. And the tenant is interested in purchasing the property from us. It's approximately 95 acres. They are willing to allow us to maintain our easements that run along the east side of the property and then also along the north and west side of the property as part of this. And you'll see down in the lower corner there, there's a part of the property that they are not asking to purchase. The purchase price that has been proposed is $675,000. As I mentioned earlier, we, the city purchased the property in 2009. Along with, there's a very small corner piece, down there, triangular piece there, just east of the words Long Lake Park that was included in that purchase as well. The city paid approximately $650,000 for it. The lease that we have with the concrete recycling company pays an annual rent of $15,000. The subject property is also identified in the Recreation and Parks Master Plan. As you can see, it creates, it's the missing link of a recreation corridor there that would connect Shane Kelly Park to Oviedo Sports Complex, Round Lake Park, and Long Lake Park. And so that was the long-range idea of purchasing the property was to create this recreation corridor. Obviously, also, the city, Public Works Properties are to the south. We do have, the property was, purchase was financed in 2009. We did refinance that note in 2012. The note does, matures in fiscal year 2324. The balance that is due on the note is $304,398. Mr. Axel is representing the proposed buyer. He's here tonight, available to address any questions you may have. Tonight, we're just asking for direction if you're interested in us proceeding with the proposed sale.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Who'd like to start? First, is there any interest in selling city-owned parkland that took us many years to acquire?
I mean, I'm willing to hear it out. Did we want Mr. Axel to talk real quick?
At this time?
No? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I just look at it this way. I remember when we bought that, the big deal was we were going to connect everything. We were going to have this big park. I'm not thrilled with what was on that site and all the monitoring that we continue to do and all that stuff. I mean, some part of me says it wouldn't be bad to get rid of it, but I think it defeats the purpose of us connecting all of that. That was the whole, you know, unless we don't want to do that anymore. You know, do we say, you know, 10 years later, now we've got plenty of parkland, everything's good, and we don't care anymore? We don't want to extend it? I mean, that's, to me, the question. Do we want to extend it and make that all one big thing? For me personally, I'd sell it, to be honest with you. I mean, I think we have enough there. Because of the environmental stuff we're dealing with down there, we have to continue to pay for it, to monitor it. I mean, it would have been nice, but I mean, we haven't done it in 10 years, so it wasn't a priority. So if we can get it off the books and let someone else take over, and they have to, I read in the report, they have to do the monitoring. I mean, it's been 10 years. We haven't done nothing with it. Kind of reminds me of the post office. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. But we're not doing anything with it. I'd get rid of it.
We've got plenty of parks there, and it would be good. We don't have to monitor and worry about it. And he is going to take over all the responsibility, Mr. Cobb, of monitoring and making sure that it's all good. Could you pay off that loan? Does that loan have any prepayment stuff? And are you only?
I haven't looked into that. That would be part of the process.
Yeah, you're going to put some money in the bank? I mean, we haven't done it in 10 years. I'd be all right with moving forward, would it?
I, my issue with it is, you know, what would it take to actually make that land usable to do what the master plan said for the parks? And I think that because of what had occurred there, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what's in the ground there and, you know, from the monitoring standpoint and everything else, I would, I don't see us building, you know, extending our park there in the near future.
Good idea, when we first got it. But it didn't happen, so.
I mean, I've seen the master park plan, but the cost, I don't see us getting that kind of money anytime soon, so.
Right.
So my opinion would be to look into selling it.
Keith?
Well? How many acres is it?
95. Give or take.
If I did my math right, it's only about, how much per acre is that? About $10,000 an acre?
$675, it probably.
You know, we bought a golf course for somewhere around $25,000, $30,000 an acre, right up the street. I see in the paper, a strawberry patch is going for like $60,000 an acre. I said, I don't understand why we're only getting $6,000 an acre. What other uses could there be for this? If they walked away, is it, does it have another alternative use?
As far as?
Besides the park?
I, to me, it would be a park.
Would, okay. I'm actually kind of neutral. I think the price is a little low based on stuff going around that I see in the area. Well, if we can, if we can keep connectivity with the other parks, that's, I think the intent of that property was to connect it with Shane Kelly and the sports complex. Be nice if we had something wide enough for a vehicle to go through there. I don't know if it's just the trail or what.
It's one lane road.
Okay.
Basically.
All right.
I'll just state, I am completely against selling it. Once we purchase land, we keep it in our parks and rec. We hang on to it. It doesn't matter what we do with it today. It's what they could do with it 30 or 40 years from now when we're not here. Once you sell it, it's gone. It never comes back. That can never happen again. It took us 15 years to make that happen. You know, and then connect it up across the street to the stubs. You know, you're right. Right now, we're not doing anything with it, but it's not costing us anything other than some monitoring, which I think is going to run out at some point in time.
2022.
Hmm?
2022. I have two years left.
Two more years left. We're not even monitoring it anymore. I mean, why would we want to sell it now, especially for that price? I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't support it, and I have no interest in it. It's up to you guys.
What's actually, I know they monitored for all kinds of stuff.
The staff recommendation, I think, is not to sell it, if I remember, when I looked through here.
They just went direction.
Mr. Cobb, what exactly, I know they're monitoring for all kinds of stuff, but is the monitoring coming back good now?
I haven't seen a report.
Pollard brings up a good point. I mean, look, if there's bad stuff out there, why would I want to have kids play on it? I don't know that to be true. Is there bad stuff there?
They used to take landfills in New York and convert them into parks and put pools in them all the time. This is just a construction landfill. It wasn't even a real landfill.
Right.
Basically, there's a cap on top of it, six feet deep. And so anything you build, you build on top of that cap. You cannot penetrate into the cap.
Right.
So anything that would be there, like the mayor said, it's a construction, it's a construction landfill. So it's concrete stuff, you know, wood stuff, stuff that was used for the construction process. And so it has this cap over top of it. And as long as you don't penetrate into that cap, you've got that barrier between anything that's in the landfill and what would be built on top of it.
Right.
So, I mean, we're obviously monitoring for any type of noxious gases and other items like that that the EPA, we need to monitor for. We look at the ground, we look at the water to see if there's any contamination on the water.
I would, listen, I know exactly where the mayor's coming from, but here's what I think. It's not like it's prime real estate. It's got a lot of issues. It's not like the Stubbs property. It's not like, you know, Shane Kelly was.
Then obviously, look at the map. It connects everything.
Oh, no, I know, I know, but I'm saying, but though.
Forget what's underneath it. Look at how key that piece is to connecting everything. I mean, if you guys don't want it, it's fine, but you're making a big mistake. Once it's gone, it's gone. If we should have sold anything, we should have sold the piece out on the front on 419, where the ball field is.
All I'm saying is, if down the road someday, let's say this monitoring comes back and there's some nasties there and it's cost us more money, I'd just say, I'm not arguing with you. I agree with you that it's good to connect, but it ain't the perfect piece of land, you know?
Well, I can tell you this. The property that's at the corner of Evans and Lockwood, that was the city landfill.
Right.
I think it may have been a transfer station. But it was the city landfill. So it had everything in it.
Right.
And we just, we just finished our monitoring process. We were monitoring it for methane. And it's fine now.
Okay.
So this property has less of the type of materials that would cause those types of things on it. So my assumption would be, and it's an assumption, but my assumption would be that when we're done, we're done and that we won't have any issues.
Well, that's fine. I mean, listen, we haven't done anything with it for 10 years. I see, I see both sides of this. I mean, I'm going to have to pull a Brit here. I really don't care, to be honest with you. I mean, if you want to keep it and see what happens, I just figured, you know, like when we did the post office, we're just getting around to it now. We're doing some stuff with it. I just feel like we've had it for 10 years. It wasn't a priority. It's not the greatest piece of land. I mean, whatever you want to do.
Do you have the, when we were in the master plan for the complex, do you have the old estimates on what that would have cost to do anything with this land?
I don't remember seeing that detail, to be honest. But, I mean, we can definitely look into it.
Up on the north side there, is that a retention?
Yes, it's a big pond.
What are you asking for? Are you asking for us to approve the sale, or?
No, no, I just wanted to know if you are interested in moving forward.
You go to the last.
Yeah.
Did you get any recommendations from the chief before he left? Did you talk to him about it? Is this one of those ones where you wish all of us, you get everybody's view?
No, was not able to.
You didn't talk to him?
No, I have not talked to him.
I mean, just to cut to the nutshell, if you're telling me in 2022, we're going to be good and we're not going to be on the hook for like cleaning up some nasty site, if that's, if that's the case, that's really, when I first saw it, I thought, well, you know what? I don't know what's there, you know? Maybe it's an opportunity to get rid of it. We didn't do anything. If there's nothing going to be there and we can build, then I'd be all right with it, hang on to it. But that's what concerns me, that there's a lot of.
Well, let's hear from the man who has to take care of it.
Well, one thing I agree with the mayor is, normally when cities, meaning purchase plan, they don't build more parkland. Once it's gone, it's gone. Regardless if we hold on to it now for another 20 years before the city might develop it, still connectivity. One of the main portions of our master plan was connectivity corridors throughout our city. Safe haven, so to speak, for the kids to be able to go from location to location. We have looked over the years. We have not been granted one yet, but we have put in RTP grants for rails to trails. This would be a prime location to possibly go from, excuse me, the east side of Lockwood, from that trail through Shane Kelly. We just applied for our RTP grant directly for Shane Kelly Park this past present year. If we were to be able to get additional RTP grants in the future, you could end up, as council already knows, we already have trails that go through Round Lake Park as part of the crossing, similar trail. And it would just give, it just gives that connectivity to Sports Complex, Round Lake Park, Long Lake Park.
What do you want to put on there? If you have it, if you had your wish list.
In the lower western area, I would put a mountain bike trail down to the gorge if we could ever clean it up. And then what we propose, possibly soccer fields. Mr. Cobb hit it on the head. On the top area where the concrete, you're going to have to cap that because digging it down is not feasible. It's just, it's, the concrete fines have been there too long. You need to cap it. Have no idea of what that cost would be and could end up being huge just because if you put fields there, nothing's going to perk on top of that. But the surrounding lower southern area, that lower area, that could be utilized because that was basically just been a landfill. Really nothing there in that lower area. Have to bring some fill in. But what we had discussed as part of the master planning was to do a tier system of fields and tear it down, you know? That could be done. You've got the pond on the north side. Not really much you can do with that.
What feeds that pond?
What's there's around the entire, mayor, around the entire, there's a, almost like a moat that encompasses the entire property. On the east side, which is Shane Kelly's side, that's water base. And even probably on the west side, but it's so heavily forested, so to speak, you can't really see water base. And it's a.
So it just holds the water for the whole entire landfill?
Yeah, and basically, right now, I mean, you can drive a, you know, a small vehicle on the outside. You know, we keep it, there's a moat area on the outside that you can actually drive around the area.
So some parts of this land is not usable for parks?
I would, I would, well, I mean, you can always use, even the, even the concrete fine area could be utilized by something to some degree. I mean, to what? I mean, I would never suggest.
Out of all that property, what you just described, let's.
The front area, is there where the delineate line is?
Right.
The front area coming forth is usable, I think. I think that, you know, the west side, the lower area, I really believe that we'd have to, you know, there'd have to be a lot of underbrushing and stuff. I think that could be turned into possibly like a mountain bike course that drops down, a BMX course.
But more than half that land can't be used, though, anyway.
The water base is not going to be usable, I don't think, for anything.
Right.
Unless, unless it could be used for stormwater. That's what I was going to say, unless. And then another thing, the land base, correct me if I'm wrong, but possibly mitigation. I mean, we could always use it for mitigation for another project if we wanted to put that into conservation.
All right, then, please. Passive uses.
Yes, sir. And, you know, with the, with possibly doing additional improvements in the future at Shane Kelly Park, if you need to do, to utilize possibly land base for mitigation, you possibly, since you've got connectivity, you could possibly do that. You'd have to mitigate through St. John's, but I think that could be viable.
I mean, you know, when you're looking at holding land, we've had Shane Kelly Park for 20 years. We're not even, we haven't even scratched the surface of it. You know, but you don't go sell it just because you're not utilizing it.
But that was good land, though, all used. That's my only issue.
Well, no, Shane Kelly isn't all usable. It's all usable up by the north end. The south end is going to be all just passive stuff.
No, but I say, but it's, for lack of a better word, it's clean land. I don't have these caps and this construction junk on it.
You're in the landfill part down the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, right across from the church, right in that area. That's, you know, Evans Street, see it down there? And that's all part of Shane Kelly, that whole thing.
And that was the original landfill? And the Oviedo Sports Complex, I mean, that was built, of course, prior to me being here, but from my understanding, a lot of the.
Wait, there was a time you weren't here?
Yeah, there was a time I wasn't here. A lot of the Oviedo Sports Complex is actually landfill. We've had a lot of landfill material, mattresses and tires and things like that that have come out of the ground.
The perfect use for, reuse for those types of properties.
Yes, sir.
Keep it, whatever.
I think Drew likes it.
How much, a big proponent, I mean, once you purchase land, parkland, you don't get rid of it, regardless of use or not, just because you can put it in conservation, use it as passive parkland?
Can make a cemetery.
No, you can't dig down further than six feet.
Why, you've got all that concrete out there, it's all good.
Build up.
Put a mausoleum on it.
The $304,000 debt on it, is that going to be, does that get amortized equally over the remaining life of the, of the bond? I assume it was a bond issue, is correct?
It was an original bond issue, yes. It's going to be financed into a revenue note.
Okay. So is it amortized over the, or is it a balloon payment at the end?
No, it's amortized.
It's amortized, okay.
Well, if you're going to keep it, do something with it. You know, I'm just saying, I had it for 10 years. I remember when we bought it and I voted for it. I thought it was a great idea. We're going to connect all these parks. If you're not going to, you're not going to do it, do something with it.
So Drew, is there something in the strategic plan that outlines what the plan is for this? Oh, it's in the parks and rec capital group, why? Headed to committee.
We, you know, this is part of the original or the second master planning effort we did at the time with Gladden-Jackson that then turned into AECOM. And there are, there were plans, you know, as, same thing for the Stubbs property, which is across the road. We've owned that property longer and actually have a permit with St. John's that will be expiring because we didn't go forth with the permit to build a field on that property. And we've owned that property even longer. You know, it's one of those things, I mean, as part of, under the budget, you know, we're, of course, looking at, you know, future master planning efforts. We've been kind of living off of that master planning effort that was completed in 2007 and still kind of doing low-hanging fruit things with grants and stuff and still completing a lot of things. And, of course, I'll be honest, our councils, since I've been here, have been, in my opinion, very big advocates for our park system. And I realize that during the budget downturn, we weren't able to do a lot of the stuff that we had planned as part of the 2025 Centennial Plan, but we still have been, still doing things. I would love for us to, you know, look at another master planning efforts, but I agree with Bob. I mean, right now, I don't think, you know, we're looking at, you know, any kind of bonding to do additional improvements, especially since we've got a number of other projects that are probably ahead of that right now.
Well, how much idle land do we have? You know, this is just property sitting out there. It should be usable by the citizens if we're going to do something with it. Do we have, and I suspect we have other, other properties out there in the same boat. We need to maybe update the master plan and figure out what we're going to use it for and then start knocking them off. Otherwise, just sitting there doesn't, doesn't do us or the citizens any good.
See, I just have a philosophy, like, and he knows it better than anybody. If I don't use it in six months, I throw it out. Been sitting with it for 10 years. We pay all these bills on it. We do nothing for it. And frankly, if that piece wasn't in the city, nobody would care. Maybe three of us would care. Nobody would care. We've got so many parks. That's how I feel, you know? We've got enough parks. But I do see the connecting it, you know, even if you put like a road in there that people will walk through, just something, do something with it, that's all. That's really my only thing. We haven't used it in 10 years. I voted for it to get it because I thought it was a great idea, but we just sit with it for so long. You know, sometimes just holding stuff doesn't make sense to me. Use it, then we'll be fine, you know? But you would agree, that is a piece of property that ain't the best property. I've tried, through the years, to ask you guys to do certain things on it. We couldn't do this, we couldn't do that.[1593.08] I've, I've tried through the years, ask you guys to do certain things on it, we couldn't do this, we couldn't do that. But, you know, you're going to make something of it, that's all.
Cemetery.
That's it.
No, we can't dig down.
That was the problem, I tried that.
Build up.
Tried that, he couldn't do that, that was going to be the problem.
I remember now, we had the same debate over the post office.
Right.
Right, you know, there, there were concerns about the post office, concerns about this, concerns about that. But now look what it's becoming. Because that's where the priority is right now, you know? Redevelop the old historic downtown. 20 years from now, some council could be sitting in this chamber going, okay, you know, now it's time to do this. We don't have to do it all in, in a day.
I guess they would if a little while longer, see what happens.
I mean, you're going to have a beautiful lake downtown and.
One, one of the nice things about it is, is that right now, it's actually generating income through the lease. I, I mean, I understand that.
Sorry, Barbara.
Can't hear you.
Okay.
Uh, he would like to have more stability than leasing the property. He has stability if he owns the property. So I understand the purpose why he's proposing it. But, you know, uh, our current lease, I believe, runs through, I think it's 2022. And then after that, it goes to an annual renewal, automatic annual renewal afterwards. And, but I do, I understand, I understand his concerns that, you know, he wants to have something more, more stable than just having that perpetual lease.
Yeah.
So.
Remember a couple of years ago?
He's got a pretty good, pretty sweet lease at $1,200 a month.
Uh, I think it's, yeah, it's, it's a good one.
Brian, remember a couple of years ago, we had, and you brought up a good point with the post office. We had those guys come in, they showed us what a new building would look like, they gave us a picture, they got people excited. You know, updating the whole master plan might be a big job, but could we at least over the next few months? Could, Drew, can you just, maybe just have somebody just draw out what you're thinking or, or some possibilities so we could show people, this is why we're hanging on, this is what we're thinking? Just come up with some ideas?
Just been the master plan right now?
No, I mean, just like.
No, I didn't have the, just chose it out, I don't have it to use for.
No, just, just get some detail out there, whatever, whatever building you want to put, whatever truck, you know, just something, don't have to be anything good, just so we could say, hey, this is what we're thinking towards. Because we did the post office thing five, six years ago, we're finally just getting around to it now, just so we could see what you're, what you're all thinking.
Well, it just, I mean, it shows on here, it's multipurpose fields.
Yeah.
Just, just green space. But if that's what we were intending, I mean, how, how difficult would it be to do this on that property right now, if, if we're just doing green space like that?
Mini golf course.
Well, if, if we were going to develop the property, I think that the tenant would have to probably end up vacating the site for us to be able to utilize the site the best, you know, in, in any capacity. And, and as we would master plan it, as we'd look back and go through it, of course, you're going to have to look at all the environmental needs of the property and see what St. John's might allow us to do and what, what they might not allow us to do. Building ball fields, you're not, you're not doing any, you know, you're, you're not adding a huge amount of imperious service. But, you know, some of the things you're going to have to have, if you build ball fields there, you're going to have to have that bathroom facility, so you're going to add some additional impervious service. The, the site's huge, so as Mr. Cobb said, I'm for sure that there'll be a way to utilize that, the, any additional stormwater needs for, uh, with that pond. Um, and with the, the drainage that's around the entire property, I'm for sure there'd be some way it could be engineered to utilize that. I really, the thing, and I know Mr. Cobb knows this, the, the piece that I'm, I've always been excited about is the, the west side again. I think that that could be a prime for either a BMX or a mountain bike course, just on the, on the property itself. And then to be able to tie that property into Shane Kelly through the conservation area, because you're allowed to put trails through that conservation area. We could have a huge trail system out there and, and the connectivity to the other parks would just be, you know, immensely popular, I think, as mentioned, for the, for the citizens as well.
And there, there is a soccer complex in, I think it's in Auburndale, that built on it.
Yep.
Landfield and it's tiered. And they were able to get, it's much smaller. They were able to get at least, at least six fields. And they, they honestly, the top field, the bathrooms and everything are at the top of the hill, and that's where all the parking is. And then it just cascades down. You go down a field, you go down a field and they just step down.
Yeah, because it is like, but you're, you're comfortable though that in 2022, when this, um, uh, you know, checking and monitoring and all this stuff is done, that they'll say the land is fine, you're good?
I, I, that would be my, that would be my assumption, yes.
Because when I first saw this, and the first thing I saw, everything the mayor and everybody else said I agree with, this good land, all BMX, all this stuff. My, my thing, I always think of the worst things first. And as I said, in four years from now, someone comes, wow, you got this super fund site and it's $10 million to clean it up. And then everybody said, why didn't you guys sell that when you had it? So maybe leave it the way it is, but talk to these people, how is this monitoring? Look, let one of all these consultants we have, look at this, do you see this as a problem?
And we'll turn it into a brown field and we get statement.
Well, yeah, you could do that too. I mean, do we, do you see, you know, do they see anything that's sticking out? This could be a problem, you know? That'd be a problem.
Okay. I was asking Alexis, uh, we have, we have all the monitoring reports.
Okay.
So we can get the one this once for.
Yeah, just say, you know, all these people we have on staff, these experts, just ask them, do you see any problem with this? I mean, I think you'd all agree, if they say, hey, look, you know what, you may have a couple of million dollars there in four years. I just want to make sure we don't have that and then it's fine. That was my first thing when I saw it.
Is this the site that all the monitoring wells around Waverly Wood, for, or is it for the other site?
I would say that was for the other site.
For the other site?
Yeah.
Yes, you live right by that, that's why you lost your head, that's what I'm talking about, bro.
I mean, you can't, I know somebody mentioned access to it now, you can't have access to it now. I don't know if you guys have ever gone up on the hill and seen, seen the operation they got going on up there, but. And it, it's huge, heavy equipment.
I will take a look at it.
You know, crushing up, uh, concrete and tile and this big gigantic machine into all these little sized pebbles that get used as gravel. I have a bunch of the guys gravel in my backyard, actually. All right, so it sounds like you're going to get us some reports for everybody to look at. Councilman Henkin requested, and for the time being, we're going to sit tight.
Can, can we hear, can we hear from Mr. Axel if he has anything else to add?
Sure. I don't know what you expect him to add, but.
I don't know.
Are you going to get the light right near, oh, okay.
I'm moving. Uh, I just wanted to address a couple of things, just for everybody's understanding. What, what I believe Mr. Cobb was asking for tonight was not an authorization to sell, but let's go talk about, uh, getting appraisals and consider a deal. So this isn't, let's do a deal, it's like, should we consider it? Councilman Britton, you asked about the, the price per acre. And the way I could address that simply is, the value of the land is in the utility of the land. And the fact that those materials are there might not be an ongoing contamination, environmental contamination matter, as Councilman Henkin's alluding to. And that's my understanding, is after the next couple of years, you can cease monitoring. But the reality is, all those materials are there and you can't really dig them out, there's nowhere to put them. And it's hard property to use for anything but what Drew was talking about, which is connectivity and fields. The structure of the offer, which would be subject to negotiation, anticipated the desire for connectivity. So not knowing where that would want to be, in the initial offer, it was referenced as being along the, um, west and the north, which is on the outer side of, of the rim ditch, there's some land area there. And north of the pond, which you can actually walk now if you want out there. So that connectivity would exist at the south. Uh, you could probably do something, it's a little more challenging, because I don't know if you can really see it on the map that was put up, but the actual, uh, shop is at the south end, just north of that row of, I think there's city facilities and a couple of other private facilities down there. So there's an actual shop at that skinny little bit of area of what I would call unfilled area. I had actually sat down with, with Mr. Wyatt and looked at where he's got materials stored now. I think it's some concrete pipe and so forth. So it's kind of being used as an extension of, what was that, the, the other landfill?
No, it's really public park yard.
Okay, but, but you've got sort of this haul road that may or may not be on this site, also on the east boundary that goes all the way up into Shane Kelly. So the whole idea of connectivity wouldn't go away if there was a transaction. And understand, the lease references roughly four and a half acres at the top of the hill. It doesn't really get into that area where the shop is. So it's, it's this party's desire, as, as, uh, Mr. Cobb pointed out, to secure some understanding of their future. And right now, although you've got these annual, possible annual renewals, uh, the intent was, at the time of the purchase for the city, to use this as some sort of fields. And there's a 90-day kickout clause, you've got 90 days to stop processing and six months to get all your junk out of there. So you've got this young man working on a business, would like to make a go of it, and he's saying, gee, I've got to secure, uh, an acquisition or I've got to find something else to do. Now, I don't think this is a huge income to you. That's just what's driving their desire to purchase, is they don't see any long-term viability if the city's going to utilize this for fields. Uh, one other question that came up, and I'm not sure what went into the estimate when this, uh, Centennial Report was done, which I think is '06, '07, but it was the same conception then, you see the drawing fields. The, the estimate then was $7 million. So I think utilizing this site is possible. It can absolutely be fields, I don't see any reason why you can't. And, and, uh, the mayor's correct, there's other locations where even standard landfills with caps have been used for, for parks. So I don't see that as really a problem. The question is, are you going to do that and are you going to, going to go through that expense or look at this all the time? I had been asked by, by, uh, one of the council members outside of this meeting, gee, Dave, you've got this long list of, of potential uses that these guys want to make of the property. But the, the reality is, they want to be able to continue their use and the ancillary things to that use, which would be an office, a shop, some storage, just recycling of, and transfer of all kinds of materials. Because if you go up there, uh, they accept, if people are digging a pool and there's nowhere for the dirt, they accept that and clean that up and, and sell that. They accept asphalt, they accept, uh, concrete. So it's, it's a range of different materials. Uh, so I think if you were to say, let's go negotiate, it doesn't have to be all the property. The thought was, with all the property comes the obligations. My understanding of the rim ditch is, it collects all the water that runs into these materials, which aren't 100% inert, because that included drywall and gypsum and so forth. And it all goes to that retention pond of the north. So that's what that's for. I don't think the rim ditch could go away, I don't think that stormwater pond could go away, because it's really more of a collection system. So if the city desired, as I said, we want connectivity, we want to use part of this property, you can just say what those things are. The rights that go with the property will, to some degree, dictate what's the price, what's the value, Mr. Britton, Councilman Britton. It's not going to be on the open market worth as much as other sites that have other utility to them. So it's as simple as that. So I just ask for the opportunity for these folks to negotiate, uh, for you to get some of your questions answered and for this to come back at a later date. And you guys look at the structure of the deal and say, this does or doesn't make sense with more information later.
Dave, are you saying? Are you saying that this, uh, this fellow, he would, he wouldn't mind having just a part of that? And I'm just thinking outside the box, so he, just to, this would be a tough business to relocate, because he's been doing it there for so long, so maybe he wants a small piece of this property and maybe we could still do parks?
Well.
We could still do our parks, could you guys weigh, weigh in on that? Could we sell some of it and still use it for some parks?
I don't think it'll work, the, the mayor did point out, drive up the hill and look at this machine in operation.
Okay, I got you.
All right.
And here's the other.
You don't want to put that next to, um, sports fields with little kids.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to.
So what I'm saying is, the connectivity.
Yeah.
Walking on a trail is a little different than you're out there playing ball, trying to have conversations and so forth.
Right.
This is loud.
Yeah, now, when you just, when you brought up that the guy was trying to put down some roots and he wants to own.
He said, I want to buy the top of the hill. And, and my honest opinion was.
Yeah.
What value to the city, other than the connectivity, does the rest of it have if you got this big monster?
So coexisting out there is not good, just trying to help.
I don't, you know, I, I appreciate that, but if it was my kid going to the park, I don't want him next to this machine.
No worries.
And then, you know, another point I'm going to make for everybody to consider, and this is no offense to the operator of the business, but, you know, you sell the land and the first thing Mr. Axel talked about is he wants to expand his business. Is this really the type of business you want right next to your residential neighborhood? Expanding?
Yeah.
Well, that could be limited by the city pretty easily. Uh, one last thing to point out, and I'll leave you guys to it.
And then you said the collection system is due to the use, it's the use that's up on the top of the hill that's creating the runoff into the.
No, it's the presence of what's buried.
Oh, it's buried, okay.
Okay. So I just did some quick math at the offering price, which I'm not saying is a price that, that we would end up if there was a transaction. But typically, the property appraiser appraises things at roughly 85% of market value. So if the city goes out and gets an appraisal and we work out the uses and do a deal, if 675 were the price, I just did some quick math, and at your current mileage rate, at what that would be assessed at, you're talking about tax revenue of $29,244 at your present mileage rate. So if you stop paying the monitoring, but quite frankly, in a couple of years, that stops anyway. Uh, you, your lease income goes away, but you've got this tax revenue. Uh, your interest is pretty low, it's only $5,000, $6,000 a year for a few more years. Uh, but right now, you've got, out of your revenues, you've got $60,000 a year or so that you're utilizing for this, that you can use for something else for the next few years. Um, the last thing I would mention is, I did read your Centennial Plan, which says, an important thing to do where you don't really have significant parks, is look over to the east side of town. It might be time to do that while there's still a Seminole County rural line for the moment. There might be some opportunities out there. Uh, this isn't a huge bunch of money, uh, but it would help in that direction. So that's all I've got, unless there's questions for me.
Cool.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Cobb, bring back the information Councilman Henkin asked for, and then, uh, talk with Councilman Chet now and.
Okay. Just want to make sure, um, I came, I had two things. Uh, one was looking for more detail in the recreation master plan and.
The monitoring results is what I heard.
I had the monitoring results. Get the latest monitoring report on the park.
Yeah, just so I'm clear with everybody, I'm good with the park stuff. I just, I want to make sure that we don't get stuck down the road and someone says, wow, you guys should have cleaned that up. We've been monitoring that for a long time, 10 years, 15 years, a long time to monitor, monitoring for what? I just want to make sure it's good and then go build your park, that's all. Just don't want to get stuck with a, with a bad thing that we have to pay for something that we're not expecting, you know?
I think it would have shown up by now if anything was going to show up.
I would think so.
I think it's been being monitored prior to us buying it.
Yes.
All right, cool.
All righty, anything else on this issue?
That's it, Mayor.
Good. All righty, let's, uh, go back to item number one and legislative session wrap-up. Seems Mr. Carmody has joined us, Katie, come on up. Don't mind us, Chris, we were just being efficient, we figured we'd jump ahead.
Not a problem.
How are you?
Good. I shouldn't have stopped at Popeyes, it looks so good. Well, good afternoon, good evening, uh, everyone. Uh, I think this is me, or it will be here in a second. Thanks for inviting us here tonight, another good session in the books. Uh, I'll kind of start with that. A lot of folks in session as concluded has said, was it just me or did this one seem like it flowed better and, and what have you? And I think the answer is yes. Several factors for that, but there was, there was less friction points between the presiding officers. You had a new governor who had a honeymoon period. You had presiding officers that made it, made it a point during the summer season, during campaigns, to break bread together quite a bit, it was well documented, to get to know each other better. So when they do have those friction points, they didn't necessarily play out publicly, it could be done. I, I know people complain on transparency, but from our perspective, it's better some of these things don't play out, because they can just work out their issues over, over a meal. All right, we figured out what, how we're going to negotiate this issue, which Katie and I will talk about shortly. And then they resolve themselves when they get to the floor. So less friction, friction this session, they only took, took an extra day to finish, and that was a few budget things. So let's look at that. Um, I think first and foremost, you start with stats, right? Uh, about 3,500 bills filed, um, of those, a lot of appropriations bills, and then, of course, 1,600 general bills. And only 197 passed, so, you know, you can do some quick math on that. It's hard to pass a bill and that, that kind of dictates where this session goes every year. Um, and, and part of what went into that is you had new, as I hinted at, new representatives, new senators, new governor and cabinet. So we'll start with the representatives. I think if you'll see, was it still loading? Should I wait?
We got a catch-up.
There were 40, 40-plus new representatives, Republican and Democrat, uh, in the House. So, uh, if you, you take that into account, that's a, that's a lot of sheep to herd if you're a speaker. Uh, including, we have a new rep, uh, here from Oviedo, we'll, we'll show his wonderful picture in a second, David Smith, who hit the ground running. Uh, he's, uh, served in our military, um, is well-known here locally, didn't have much trouble at all getting elected, so, uh, he's felt comfortable up there, hired good staff and got to work. And as we'll touch on later, helped us with, with that on appropriation. So we have a new representative in David Smith, who if he's re-elected through his term, will have eight years. And then as well, uh, there's new senators. There is 10 new senators, technically speaking. Eight of which, if you look at that list, came from the House, so you see a trend line there. That if you want to serve in the Senate, a lot of times, you go serve in the House first. But those new faces, both in the House and Senate, kind of shaped where we're going. And of course, you have a new governor and cabinet. Going back to November, you had three statewide recounts. And a lot of folks, when they hear war recount, they think of the year 2000. But in all actuality, there wasn't really a recount in the year 2000. There was two counties that had to look at some CHADS, and there was some newspapers that did recounts. But the state did not go through the exercise of a full-blown recount. Whereas in November of 2018, we had three actual recounts, two of which were in the manual recount. Uh, margin of error, the ag commissioner, Nikki Fried, she went to bed, if she did go to bed that night, down a couple thousand votes. She woke up or sometime shortly thereafter, the next morning, uh, on Wednesday, and was up by a couple thousand votes, thank you Broward County. So there was an election bill this year for some of that. But that shaped a lot of how this session went. And when we say these new faces, you had a governor who was in the recount mode, so he led from the middle. He talked about water quality, the medical marijuana issue early. And, and you've seen that as well, is Lieutenant Governor Nikki Fried, Ashley Moody and Jimmy Petronas. There was sort of a consensus of, this is a purple state and we now, we know it now more than ever, uh, with three statewide recounts on the statewide offices. And there was a couple recounts in some of the other Senate and House races. So they were leading a little more from the middle than you would see from a traditional Republican elected candidate, so that shaped things. And then, oh, there was this other recount, you saw Senator Scott was elected, which shameless plug, might be a good time to let you know, hey, we opened a DC office in January. So I say that, um, if we can ever be helpful in working with your teammates up there, just let us know. Uh, Dora Bartlet, you see on the left there in that picture, um, his firm, the Ayers firm, joined up with us in January. We're actually going to have a firm retreat in DC in June for our state team and the DC team to figure out how we can work better together. But it's just another way we can hopefully provide a little extra value to you all winter if we can need it. Uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katie to talk about some of those new leaders and what their priorities were. were.
As Chris mentioned, we have three new leaders and their priorities. So it's like the three-legged stool up there, you know, one person wants something, it's quite easy for them to hit it done. However, one person doesn't want something, it's quite easy to make that not happen as well. But we will start with Governor DeSantis. His priorities going into this were water quality. I'm sure you remember during the campaign, he talked a lot about the Everglades and the algae bloom. Government accountability, shortly after taking office, he issued a couple of executive orders. Some were for the South Florida Water Management District, some were for, one was for the Broward County Sheriff's Office. And he also had appointments at the bench, where he was able to go ahead and get three new Supreme Court justices nominated, who are a lot more conservative than the previous ones. We had for Senate President Phil Galvano, his toll road and critical corridor expansion, which I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Higher education funding, school safety, and gaming, the Seminole Tribe Compact was also very important to him. The Speaker of the House, healthcare reform, was one of his top priorities, and he was able to do a lot in that. The Certificate of Need repeal bill passed this year, as well as a telehealth bill. School choice expansion is big for him, and higher education accountability was also very important.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
That certificate of need thing, so just so I'm clear, so you can build a hospital wherever you want now? You don't have to go through that heavy process that we went through for 10 years?
So the repeal that passed, it'll start for regular hospitals. It will start this year, and especially hospitals will start in two years. You're going to see a lot, in 2020, you're going to see a lot of the requirements that are changing to licensure requirements, as opposed to the certificate of need.
Okay. So no longer that long, drawn-out process that we went through for all those years. Nice.
Correct. But of course, for all of these priorities, the only thing they would need the budget, the only thing they're constitutionally mandated to do, as you can see up here, it was $91.9 billion this year. The way that it broke down was $22.5 billion for education, $15.2 billion for transportation, tourism, and economic development, for agriculture and natural resources, it was $6.1 billion. And looking ahead, the Revenue Estimating Conference seems to think that there will be a recession on the horizon. So, but they've been saying that for a while now. So we'll see when that gets there. Visit Florida funding, that was another big fight this year. Came down to the last couple hours, last week of session. They finally were able to authorize it again, but it did take a little bit of a haircut with funding. From 72 million, it went down to 50. The budget should be sent to the governor next week, and that's when he will likely start going for his vetoes. And the tax package, the back-to-school holiday will start August 2nd. The hurricane preparedness sales tax holiday starts Friday, and that'll go until June 6th. The business rent tax was also reduced this year again, from 5.7 to 5.5. And our local appropriation here, we were able to get the Oviedo Regional Stormwater Pond funded with your sponsors, Senator Simmons and Representative Smith, for $500,000.
Nice.
Hasn't been signed yet?
It has not been signed yet. Next week, they are going to send the budget to the governor. So then, hopefully by the end of next week, we should know.
So that's a good time, Mayor, based on your question, as whether it's been signed. The governor has not received the budget yet, as Katie said. We heard President Galvano comments to the press last week, that he would give it to, send it to the governor after his Israel trip, which they're on now. I think they return tomorrow, or later, maybe later this week. But when he gets in his hands, he technically has 15 days to start the veto process, either veto the whole budget, he won't do that, or line item veto it, that's more likely. And talking with staff on our issue and a few others, it's an interesting conversation. He's a new governor. He's trying to figure out his ethos on the vetoes. On one hand, they'll say, "Well, we really kind of got everything we wanted from the legislature," to which Katie and I and others say, "So don't veto anything, or at least don't veto in our projects." On the other hand, you know, no budget in the minds of a governor's ever, 100% perfect, so there will be some vetoes. We're certainly working with our sponsors. I will give both Senator Simmons and Representative Smith all the credit they're due on this. They helped usher it through the process, and certainly have been in contact with the governor's office to make sure that, all things being equal, it's protected. So we'll continue to work with them, and obviously, knock on whatever this is, wood, we'll have some good news next week, or whenever the governor acts on the budget, and we'll keep him. But if you're feeling itchy, and you want to write a letter, or you want to do something, you know, I would never caution you against that. It can't hurt for you to tell the governor how important this is, because we know how important it is. It helps that it's water quality as well, because this governor's certainly on record.
If you'd like something from us, I mean, we could put something together. We can all sign.
It won't hurt, I'll tell you that. I know that's a critical project, for a lot of different reasons, both in city development, and in water quality, and our lakes, and connecting up into the river. So by all means, and we'll make sure that the right people know that that letter is delivered as well.
Is that okay with council?
Cool.
Mr. Cobb, or Patrick, whoever you're going to assign it to, put something together?
Sure.
Signature line for each of us, and we'll all sign it. One letter?
We can do that.
Dear Governor, that Israel trip looked great. Please don't veto this line.
We got your back.
So you're going to see on this next slide, a lot of issues up there, and we have, in some presentations that Katie and I do around the state, we have even more issues up on that slide behind me, up to 16. There was a lot that happened in those 197 bills that passed. So we're going to try to touch on some of the ones that are a little more relevant here. And we'll start right away with election law changes. Did I mention there was three recounts in 2018? What's important for you all to know is a couple of things you see up there. A lot of change to the vote-by-mail process. We used to live in a process where you could request your ballot six days out from the election. You don't get it until three days out from the election. You let it sit on your counter for a couple of days, and then the day before the election, you think, "Oh, I should probably mail this," or drive it up there. That's not, that sets everyone up for failure. And having, we represented it, then Governor Scott, Senator Scott's recount team, we were working with all 67 supervisors election. It's amazing how rules are interpreted differently, but this was one of those habitual problems, is absentees were showing up, or vote-by-mails they're now called, they were showing up two, three days afterwards. And it's clear that people just thought you had to postmark it by the day of the election, because they didn't get it until a couple of days before. So what they did is, they extended that out a little bit, from six to 10 days you have to request. They extended the vote-by-mail window by five additional days, and then also expanded the canvassing up to 22 days. I think what you'll hear most from your constituents is not in the moving 10 weeks to 11 weeks before general election, the primary, but those next ones, the no solicitation zone, some of those, we get excited when we see those. It's usually a cone marked off 100 feet to the entrance of the polling location. That will now be 150 feet. The wrinkle is, is now whether it's on a church property, or a city building, or whatever, beyond that 150 feet, you cannot restrict any solicitation. If you voted a church, you probably got spoiled. Most churches say, "We don't want any solicitation on our property," so you have to go across the street and wave your signs. Now, I can assure you that maybe some of you all take advantage of this, and others, at the 151st foot, I am certain folks will be set up. Every polling location, both early and day of, and taking advantage of the new rule. The other thing is, it mandates some changes on the county canvassing board policies. You didn't have to worry about it with our supervisor election, because he had great legal counsel. But I'll tell you, there were some supervisors across the state, that when they would fix a damaged ballot, like they had to re-ballot in, they thought it was okay to just do it in their office, by themselves, and then come back and go, "It's fixed." Now, this makes 100% clear that you have to do that in front of your county canvassing board, and you also have to at least alert, like if you guys are representative from campaigns affected by that, "Hey, we're going to be redoing these ballots." You can watch it if you'd like. That bill had 40 sections, a lot of it dealt with Amendment Four implementation, the restoration of rights. So there's other things in there that we haven't covered. If you have questions, let us know. We can get to it. One, I know you probably have heard from, I know I was part of Facebook group posting, I think, on this one, was the property development bill. I'll get into there quickly on this. So this bill developed in the House and the Senate, very different from each other. Then they started to get married up. And some of the more onerous provisions for local governments was on the House side. Those got watered down, thanks to the folks in the Senate. We were working on your behalf and others to water down some of those provisions. So I'll just kind of give you the high ground. And like every session, in a two-year cycle, there's tweets available. So communicate to us if there's things that have really messed up our processes here, that we can go back to them and say, "You may have not intended for this to happen. If you did, then I guess we'll have to work around you. But if you didn't intend it, let's fix some of these." So real quickly, you'll see up there, affordable housing. You notice a trend across the state, is a lot of cities and counties are requiring, they call it inclusionary zoning, affordable housing on a lot of development orders. I'll plead ignorance, I don't know what you have or have not done here. The House wanted to completely restrict them, what the Senate went is, if you do it, you have to offset the cost to developer. It's sort of a compromise proposition. Not popular with a lot of cities and counties, but it's better than what the House was, that took away all the rights. Shot clocks on permitting, this is some stuff that cities and counties, that generally didn't have a lot of heartburn over. And it's basically, if you turn in your application, you have 30 days to get some comments back, then you have 30 days as a developer to give it back to the city or county. And then beyond that, it's 120, 180 days to get that approved or denied on that process. On that, impact fees, you collect them at the time of permit issuance, not before. The one that was kind of controversial, and I think it's going to be litigated, is the attorney's fees for prevailing parties on challenges to development orders. The genesis of that was Pinellas County, which had several projects go through that then were immediately challenged by an environmental group, tied up in the court system for two or three years. Generally frivolous lawsuit. I'm not saying all of those lawsuits are frivolous, but these were considered frivolous. They lost. But they tied up a project two or three years, some of which was important to that county. So this idea of putting attorney's fees in there is to discourage frivolous lawsuits. Now, here's the interesting thing, and Mayor, you and I have had some conversations about this, so I'll share with the group, is it says entitled to attorney's fees. So there's some parts of statute that says the judge shall award. There's some parts of statute that says the judge may award. This says entitled, and it doesn't direct the judge what to do. And I've talked to several folks that deal in the attorney's fees world more than I do, and they say that it creates a bit of a, the judge may be allowed to do it, but isn't required to do it. Someone's going to say entitled, 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 I want it. I think that part will get litigated out, and at some point, they'll either fix it at the statutory level, or a judge will rule what entitled actually means, from their perspective. And there's other instances in law where it says entitled, not shall or may. So that's an interesting wrinkle that we'll hear about later. And then beyond that, as you see, and there's a whole lot more sections covered in there, talks about private providers of inspections. There are some parts of the state where it's difficult to get your inspection done, and so that shortens the window from seven to two days, that you can opt in for that private provider. It still has to go through the city or county to get that actual, those inspection permits put back through the system, to ultimately have a stamp on them, but kind of speeds up the process a little bit.
Can you stop there for a second?
Yeah.
So on the first item, where I talked about the provide incentives, that's only if you have some sort of affordable housing ordinance, correct?
Yes. So like I said, there's some counties that have what they call inclusionary zoning, where if you try to get a development order, usually dealing with multifamily, but sometimes with some more commercial-oriented developments, they, in the order, or in the granting of it, they require a certain amount of affordable or workforce housing in it, which the developer argument would be, "Hey, we got a pro forma, and we got our funding based on X. Now you've made it Y. The bank's not going to pay for Y. So what are we going to do now?" The flipside of that is, it's no secret, especially here in Central Florida and other parts of the state, workforce and affordable housing, both, they're different, but they're both very much in need in our area. So, you know, local governments, like yourself and others, are trying to figure out, how do we deal with this, you know, short of just building better roads and better access to transportation, to make it easier for, if you live in Oviedo, to get downtown, either Lake Mary or Orlando, or wherever. So they're trying to work through that, but there's been a strong pushback from the development community on just strict, clear inclusionary zoning, because it, from their perspective, justifiably just wrecks their pro forma, and wrecks their funding, to which they say, "We can't do the project in the first place. One, you won't get our project, and you won't get your housing." So they're trying to figure that out. I think this bill will be tweaked next session. I think there'll probably be some unintended consequences, as bills like this that pop late in session are. But generally speaking, the league and the counties were able to work out a lot of the differences with the legislature on it.
I'll go quickly.
And then, Mr. Cobb, that second section there with the permitting process, are we, would we be in compliance with that, or are we going to have to adjust our permitting process?
My understanding, that deals with building permits.
Yeah, or it's development orders as well.
Is it development orders?
Development.
We're fine?
Building permits is, yeah, a whole nother can of worms. That's trickier. And I'm certain this city, and just like every county we talk with, are struggling in that department, because it's, we're just through a boom period right now. And, you know, even if you hire five, 10 more staffers, you're going to have, it's still going to be slower than every developer wants, and I think most developers get that.
Anything past 24 hours is too slow for a development.
Yeah. And, you know, God bless them, because it's keeping the economy going, but to your point, statute allows 120 days to get the building permit.
Always that darn fire department.
Oh, Jeff's here, I'm sorry.
The Hurricane Michael, I'll quickly go through this, to be respectful of your time and others on the agenda. No surprise, this session, Hurricane Michael's a priority. You can see up there, some of the focus, affordable housing dollars, some local infrastructure grants. Also, interestingly enough, a waiving of the out-of-state tuition, increased fees for those local states and the university up there. The idea is, a lot of folks moved out because of the hurricane, they couldn't find housing, and those colleges are struggling to get folks back in. So instead of just throwing a bunch of money at those state colleges and universities, which they may ultimately still have to do, they're waiving some of those fees to encourage folks from Georgia, Alabama, and others to come in and take classes there. So hopefully that's successful.
Now, was there anything, for some reason, I recall hearing something about, after the hurricanes, that there may have been some new legislation passed about trees and removing stuff, you know, prior to a hurricane, or when there's a named hurricane?
You know, there was some talk, and there was some legislation, but that ultimately didn't get anywhere. There is the vegetable garden legislation, that I know you all have been focused on some, but the tree, there was a tree trimming bill last year, I want to say, but I don't believe this year, unless I'm missing anything, Katie. Do you remember on that?
There was one running through the legislature, that basically said, if a property owner has a letter from a certified arborist, certified through this specific horticultural society, or a landscape architect, they do not have to get a permit to remove that tree. And we were trying to figure, we thought that it was only if there was a tropical storm declared. But we got a copy of the bill that said, "Doesn't matter. If they get that certified person." We're trying to figure out if that bill got passed.
I don't believe it did, but I'm going to, I'll get you an answer before I get home tonight.
Okay. That would be great to know.
Yeah.
We have, our city has a long history of Tree City USA, tree preservation. Our land development codes are written on tree preservation, as a matter of fact. And so it would be a huge, it would be a huge impact on us, as far as, you know, people being able to just go and, they have, like I said, they have certification from this certain society that they can, they can just go in and say, "Hey, your tree looks dead." You know, so that'd be a big impact to us. But I'll see if I can find that bill that I have.
I've got some folks on the chair looking on this right now, so not under the lights. We'll go quickly through some of these, school safety, school choice. No surprise, after Parkland last year, they had the Parkland Safety Commission, that was appointed by the governor and others, to figure out better ways to harden our schools and make them safer. A lot of recommendations came through there. Probably the most controversial, and we'll get to that right away, is the school guarding program. They extended it to instructional personnel, and not just non-instructional personnel, if a county opts in. Obviously, Seminole County has not opted in as of yet. I got the report today, 38th county opted in, as of this morning, or yesterday. So 38 of the 67 school districts has opted into this program, to allow instructional personnel to carry on campus. There was other parts of that, but that was obviously the one that was most focused by the legislature. And then school choice, Senate Bill 7070 passed, and we expect it to be signed by the governor. Actually, it might have already been. But a couple of things on that, obviously, there is an ongoing battle between traditional public schools and charter schools in the legislature. The House is very pro-charter, and just in general, school choice, that being private or other opportunities. And then the Senate, I wouldn't say they're anti-charter, they're just not as gung-ho about that. This was another year that, if you're for school choice, i.e. charters and others, this was a win. They expanded some of the scholarship programs, like the Gardner Scholarship and Hope Scholarship, that's for kids who are being bullied as well. Schools of Hope program was expanded, and then have a deal with failing schools in a public school system. And interestingly enough, I always thought this was interesting, because my brother's a public school teacher, a traditional public school, and had a pretty good SAT score. They had the best and brightest scholarship, that if you scored a certain level on your SAT, in some cases, 20, 30 years ago, you got a teacher bonus every year, which is great for him. But a lot of studies show that that has zero indication on how good of a teacher you're going to be. So now they've flipped it to, now an effective or highly effective rating, teachers get those bonuses, which makes more sense. I checked with him, he's got a highly effective, so he's safe, if you're worried.
That's a problem my daughter had all the time. She was getting highly effective, but didn't have the score, so she was getting half the bump.
Right. So I think this was clearly the right thing to do, as much as, sure, we want someone with a high SAT, but it has zero impact, from all we can tell. I'll go quickly through economic development, Visit Florida. We touched on some of that. Enterprise Florida, fully funded. Visit Florida got a haircut at 50 million, and it's only good through June 30th of 2020. That's going to be a battle that is revisited next session, as Speaker Oliva has made it clear. I think his words were, "We're going to renew it for one year, so the governor could see how useless it is." That's not a good sign, but there's a lot of folks, including in these communities, this part of the state, that cares deeply about tourism, and cares about Visit Florida being funded. funded and existing, so there's going to be folks who, especially in this community, who are frightened for that. And the Florida Job growth grant fund, it's $40 million, I know we took a swing at that last go around when it was $85 million, but it's back at $40 million. This is for the infrastructure improvements in a city or county that would help spur on some economic development, usually if you've got a company or two on the hook, i.e. you build the road or you expand the utility base here and will come. That's $40 million, that'll go into effect July 1. Interestingly enough, DEO, who administers that, no one who was with DEO last year that worked on this is still with DEO now, so you've got everyone starting from scratch. The good news is, the folks working at Katie Crowfoot and some of the others at DEO are very close with our team, so we certainly at least know who to work with, who we can work with on your behalf if you guys want to take interest on that. All right, I'll sped through those quickly as I can. Katie, tell us about some corridors.
All right, the new transportation corridors, as I mentioned earlier, this is a big priority for Senate President Galvano. As you can see up there, the Florida Turnpike would extend up into the Sun Coast Parkway extension, and that would go from 275 all the way up into Georgia. And then in southwest Florida, we will get the Polk Collier corridor. Sanctuary cities ban, that passed this year, it was one of those bills, I believe the House was on the floor until 2:00 a.m. one night because of this bill during session. Currently, there are no sanctuary cities in this state, but this bill will make sure that it stays that way. I'll go back to Chris for texting while driving.
One, I know that you all care very deeply about texting while driving, this, as of this.
It keeps one of us awake.
Yes.
Not no more. I'm good now.
It is now a primary offense, as of next year, they're going to, this bill almost died in the final week, it was dead, it was alive, it was dead, it was alive, obviously it was alive in the end and passed. Makes it a primary offense, creates prohibition on using device in a handheld manner when in school and work zones, so any, I would just caution, if you're in a school or work zone, just put your phone down, period, even if you're just holding it to talk to someone, that's clear, that's not allowed anymore. And then they're going to do a warning period from October to December, sort of like a click it or ticket campaign type thing, but when they say warning, they're going to be encouraging police to pull folks over and say, hey, I saw you using your phone, I want to take that away. As you recall from previous years, what kind of held it up was this perception that it would be used for profiling, racial or otherwise, because now it's a primary offense, and you could just say, I saw him or her using their phone, and pull them over, oh, do I smell weed, or whatever it is that the officer's purpose may be if they were profiling. That's going to be legal anyways in two years, so no one's worried about that. The, poor joke, I guess. So part of this now is it requires warrant to access the device, so, and the, so one thing is, if you, just cautionary note, if you get pulled over, they can't ask for your device without a warrant, they can say, may I look at your device, and that's up to you to decide. The other thing is, when they write the ticket, if they do write the ticket, they have to register the race of the person for the ticket that they wrote. And there's going to be studies done to find out, is this actually being used to racial profile or not? Hopefully not, but they'll have some data to at least back that up and show it, so.
Chris, can I just ask you a quick question, just to be clear, so, you know, the work zone and the school zone, you've got to put the phone down, but I'm still unclear from everything I read, can you be driving down the road, just on a regular road, and holding your phone and talking on your speakerphone, or is it when you're doing this? Have they defined that at all?
It's my understanding that you are not to be interacting with your phone, and I forget the words they use to define, so you can still hold your phone, but there was movement to make it where you could not even have the phone in your hand.
Right.
Only hands-free in the school and the work zones.
Yeah, so in school and work zone, you've got to put that phone down.
You've got to put it down, but anywhere else, if you're just on speaker and you're just holding it while you're driving, you're good. But the key thing for me, I know Chief Chudnow, if he was here, he's mad about this, he thinks it should have been tougher.
It was originally.
You know, it should have been, for me, I think it's great, it solved the thing, we can pull them over, and that usually will stop most normal people, you pull them, hey, put your phone down, and they usually won't do it again, so I think it was a great victory, you know?
Hard fought, took a while to get there, and, but it's here, and so it's coming, be prepared.
Did the guy who killed it last year vote for it this year?
I believe he did, Chair Bradley was one of the primary proponents of it.
Bradley killed it last year, because I know the speaker told me on the phone one night, it was very late, and I said, you've got to get this done, he said, it's getting done, trust me, it's getting done. And then what happened? And then one guy killed it. But he came on board?
Yes, probably the best sponsor they've had in the Senate was Wilton Simpson, the highest ranking certainly, he's going to be Senate president after this next election cycle, so.
Nice.
He, having him there helped, he was able to, but again, that's why it almost died, they had to make some of these concessions on how do you deal with racial profiling, so, but they did get across the finish line.
That's good.
Couple of the local government issues, you saw ballot measures, I don't believe y'all have had to deal with any kind of petition ordinance on anything that I'm aware of, but you do see it pop up, and so one of these things that was done, this was originally dealing with, this bill was dealing with certaxes and what have you, but then it got expanded to a couple of different things, and part of it was to change how they do the per signature and make it align more with how the state does their ballot measures and signature petitions, and getting approvals and such, so that passed, which kind of makes sense, having gone through the paid sick ordinance, paid sick leave ordinance in Orange County, what we quickly found out is the rules governing it were nothing like the states, but the states were well thought out of having your ballot summary approved, so that there's nothing misleading about and everything, so this is probably a good thing all around, even for the folks who probably didn't want it to pass, because it'll make the process a little cleaner. On CRAs, I know we care about CRAs here in Seminole County, this bill is the better version of the bill, the original version a couple of years ago, and even last year was to just eliminate them, barring exceptional circumstances, this one now just says either the earliest of 2039 or the expiration of the CRA, they would go away unless a majority vote of the governing body, so the city councilor, whoever authorizes CRA, can just by a majority of vote extend it beyond that period, it's okay. The House, when they were conceding originally wanted supermajority, the Senate fortunately said no, if you want to do it, it's a majority, and there's some ethics provisions in there to, again, takes one bad CRA to make some bad policy up at the state level, but fortunately they solved better on this. A few more, you've got communication services, this was essentially, I'll sum it up as a glitch bill on the 5G bill that was passed, was it last year, two years ago? To our knowledge, there weren't really any hiccups on this, the League of Cities wasn't too worried about it, but it did pass, and it streamlined a little more on how 5G is implemented. You guys can see vegetable gardens there, I know this was something that we were paying attention to. Doesn't mess with HOA, deed restrictions and such, it just makes clear that local governments can't take away the right to have a vegetable garden. I've seen some pop up where I live in Orlando, Baldwin Park, they're not terrible, I'm terribly unsightly, if you're quick, you can steal an eggplant. So, and then firefighters, this bill was controversial in the sense that it was perceived that the Speaker of the House was blocking this bill due to some rivalries in Miami, ultimately he gave in and allowed this to go through. What it ultimately does is create some monetary benefits for firefighters who are diagnosed with certain types of cancer and eligibility requirements. As you all know, probably as you deal with some of your own firefighters and others, that there's a lot of studies that show that there are certain types of cancers that firefighters are very prone to get, unfortunately, and so this creates a presumption of diagnosis and creates some monetary benefits, and then it's, I think it's 21 specific cancers they deal with, and then also provides some cancer treatment covered within employer-sponsored health plans, employer reimbursement for out-of-pocket deductibles, and then one-time cash payout of $25,000 upon the firefighter's initial cancer diagnosis. This was a feel-good issue in the end, you had a lot of firefighters up there, Jimmy Petronas, who's sort of the chief fire officer for the state, and so they were happy that it got done. Hopefully there's no devil in the details, as we say, because I don't think anyone wants to revisit this bill, because it was controversial in the sense that it costs money and hinges on some local home rule issues, but it was obviously the right thing to do, so hopefully they got it right.
Is the city that has the firefighter that has cancer responsible to make the payments, or is it the state that's paying it?
I believe this ended with the state making those payments, and that was the ultimate concession, and I think from the Speaker's side, they thought it should have been a city issue, sort of, who's going to pick up the tab on that, but we can get you a full summary on that.
Can it be, can it be a retroactive for people who have it, or is it just for newly diagnosed?
Great question, I don't know, I need to look and see if that was retroactive.
That's a good one, because, I mean, it just, one comes to mind, one of our best of the best is still fighting, and he's fighting some battle and he's winning, but, you know, if it could be retroactive, that'd be great, you know?
Yep, I'll check on that.
Yeah, we'll get that in the city or the state.
How is the insurance trust funded?
The which part?
The insurance trust, it's sponsored through a group health insurance trust.
Some cities, as you probably know, there's, I think there's three main health insurance trusts in the state, I think Pigeon does one, the Florida League of Cities does one, and then there's PRM, Public Risk Management, I don't know which one y'all belong to, assuming y'all belong to, a few cities just self-insure, and some have health plans, and so that's what that means, is through those trusts, you can have those.
Is there, have you thought of impacts on this one?
I haven't gotten a full grasp on it yet, but it is alarming, especially since we are self-insured, we started talking about it in our managers group throughout the county, and the type of impact that it could have on us, our assumption was is that we're going to be responsible for the $25,000 initial payout, and that if you get a number of folks that qualify and get diagnosed, that could be a huge hit, you know? So it's, yeah, it's very concerning, especially for cities like us and other small cities that have to self-insure. But we've started talking about it. I think the League of Cities is working on setting up an insurance policy that a city could purchase just to cover this, and I don't know if they've got that finalized yet or not.
Right, and real quick, I'll mention the issues that failed, we're almost done, don't worry, but these are important because they will probably be back next year.
This is much more interesting than what we're going to talk about, so.
Well, then I'll take a little bit less time, I'll speak a little bit more slowly. Alcohol freedom issues, so think your wine sizes and craft distillery deregulation, that failed, but that will absolutely be back next year. Deregulation, we had a massive dereg bill that went through and ultimately, and it didn't make it past the finish line. Preemption of local regulations, gaming compact, so the Seminole Tribe, they were unable to come to an agreement, again, scope of practice, while the Speaker had a big year for healthcare, he will help, he will likely be back with more, scope of practice bills to try to expand that. The infamous license plate bill.
On the deregulation bill that you had up there, so was that deregulating all professional licenses?
No, it was, it was, it was all over the place, so there was the local regulations, we worked with Patrick and your team on that particular one, one trying to figure out what the impact would be on us, and we determined, some of it was indeterminate, some of it was, this is a problem, let's fight it, but on the dereg bill, it was things such as tinkering with the building commission, and how they're set up, and who's represented on the building commission, how building codes adopted, other areas, there was some deregulation of license, and I can get you the list, it was the idea of, I think like boxing announcers, or there's a few others that they were, some that seemed obvious, right, like maybe there was a time where that was needed to be regulated, but now, but none that were terribly controversial, that wasn't where the controversy was, messing with the building commission got controversial, because they were going to shrink it from 22 to 11, and then I think they ultimately settled on 17 members, it's a big board, and we get why they have issues there, but that's the building code across the state, essentially, so that's important, that there's folks that are properly represented, but that's, I can get you the full, like, one of the last committee summaries that was there, of like the last versions of the bill, but some licenses, not all.
Gotcha, okay.
And the smoking age increase, there was a bill to increase the smoking age from 18 to 21, the fracking ban, school board term limits, and the bill that came out of this past year, the CRC elimination bill, did not make it past the finish line this year either.
CRC?
The Constitution Revision Committee, so that's the one where a lot of the stuff that you saw on your ballots this past year were bundled, so you saw the, you know, indoor vaping with offshore drilling, that conclusion is kind of what led people to file the bill to eliminate that, so we don't have as long ballots. With that, thank you very much for having us, and we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Good update, good job.
Any questions? Two quick ones, one, the attack on home rule, how do you see that trending?
This was a better session than others, and you have, you had a governor, he's vetoed two bills, he vetoed a local bill, Melbourne, I don't even know what that bill was about, but the first bill he vetoed was, it was a lot of things, but one of it was that plastic straw ban preemption, so I don't believe y'all had a, maybe you have, I think Orlando's talking about it, but there's some cities and counties that are doing plastic straw bans, and the state preempted that, or the legislation preempted that, and the governor in his veto bill, it was a big environmental reg bill that was also dealing with recycling and how the haulers get paid by the counties, that was probably, from my mind, the more controversial issue, because it was going to make counties, all the counties renegotiate their hauling contracts. But in his veto letter, he basically said, the reason I'm vetoing this is let the locals deal with it how the locals want to deal with it. On the straw ban, he said, this is something you can vote him out if you don't like your straw ban, and if you do, you keep it. But that environmental reg on the environmental hauling is coming back, and essentially it's, I'll give you this, just because it probably will affect us either directly or indirectly, that is a, the idea is during the recession, a lot of the haulers renegotiated their contracts, because they wanted to get more, you know, get paid better for gas and other things. As a result, they got these long-term deals with counties, mostly, some cities that did the deals, and recycling was not as trendy then as it is now, or at least it's not as prolific, and so contamination has become a massive issue, but these folks have these contracts and they have to do it, and as you know, slight contamination in one load can mess up the whole thing, and then they've got to figure out how to sort it, and so they were, they were hoping, they've tried two years now, and two years has been shot down by the governor, Scott, now DeSantis, to basically require renegotiation of all those contracts, where the county or the city can still drive a hard line, but if all the contracts are getting renegotiated, I'm not saying they'll collude, but they're going to charge more for all of this, so.
Price of recycling.
The price of recycling is going to go up no matter what, if that bill ever gets the light of day. I think you'll see it on all these contracts when they come up for renewal, because I think they've all had enough, and the haulers have said, we're charging X unless you do something different to make sure there's no contamination, but that's one that I thought was more controversial, ironically enough, because that's going to be some real dollars and cents to anyone that has a contract with a hauler, probably straight to your taxpayers.
We're in talks right now.
Yeah.
So there's no, you think the homestead exemption increase will come back next year?
I don't see this Speaker or this President making that a push, but it is an election year, and while they, they're not on the ballot, the people following them on the ballot, it's, the Governor's going to want to make the state a little more voter-friendly for his friend in the White House, so they might try to put some issues on the ballot that are going to drive turnout. I think what Katie said, the CRC issue will be back, and I think also the single subject issue for the CRC will be back, but possibly, but, I mean, that didn't pass, I mean, and out of all of them, everyone was convinced that would be the one that did pass, and the others would be, you know, crapshoot, the exact opposite happened, that thing didn't come close, and all the others pretty much sailed. So I haven't heard that, I think they would look bad for them to say, just a year later, after it pretty clearly did not pass, for them to try it again, but I wouldn't rule anything out, it's election year.
Okay. Sleep good, Jerry. Anything else?
That's it.
Bob, anything?
It's an honor, folks, we appreciate you all having us out here tonight.
You guys do a great job, and we know how, we know that it's not easy to look at all that stuff, and you guys make it look easy, so we appreciate it.
Well, texting thing, can't thank you enough for that.
Personal privilege on the appropriation, I'll come with obviously the governor's approval, be sure to show your love to our reps, and Senator David Smith and David Simmons, the Davids did a great job on this, they got sick of hearing from us, but to their credit, they followed through.
So you guys are going to have a little off.
He told me to stop texting, right?
Mm-hmm.
You're going to do stuff up there now.
We do.
Yeah, we are up there.
Cool, all right.
Let us know, we'll tell them to give you the nickel tour if you're up there.
That's interesting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to see you.
You too.
Bye.
Bye.
All righty, Mr. Cobb, we're up to the budget presentation.
Stay calm, ladies, thank you for everything. Bye, guys. We're not done?
No, one more thing.
We'll let Kelly pull up the monitor.
Come on, this is the fun stuff.
Actually, Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Boop. He's put together a presentation to update you on the progress we've made since the last work session, and so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Are these using the new numbers on the guidance that we received?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Honorable Mayor, City Council members, this is an update to the report that we gave.
Jerry, you need to grab the microphone.
Oh. Of course I do. This is a...
Wait a second. Barbara's going to jump up and hit you with it.
I heard it. Sorry about that. This is an update to what presented to you this past March. What you can see is we now have a revenue on, in Ad Valorem of $922,000. The estimate that we gave you in March was a 7% estimate. We received information from the county late Thursday afternoon. Citywide, we are, the increase was 9%, 28% for the CRA. So, these numbers actually take into consideration the amount that goes to the CRA and the amount that goes to the city. Looks like the CRA contributions this year from both the city and the county will be a little bit less than $1 million. So, there will be about a $300,000 increase in revenues to the CRA between the current budget year and next year. The rest of these revenues pretty much remain the same. We didn't make any changes yet because we're still a bit too early in the process to estimate the rest of these revenues. I do anticipate, or we do anticipate, for them to increase a little bit. I am concerned about this one line here, utility taxes. That's where the communication services tax line is at. Last year, well, let me back up. Several years ago, we once received $1.7 million in communication services taxes. This past year, we were supposed to receive about $1,500,000, $1.1 million. We were about $50,000 short of that. This year, I don't think we'll quite get $1 million in our communication services tax. So, over the time, it has decreased about $700,000. But nonetheless, we're looking at these numbers, and we will bring them back to you in an updated fashion in the month of June. We still have not budgeted any use of unbalance yet because we haven't also fully budgeted our expenditures, and once we do that, we will take a look at what we need to do there. So, right now, as of the end of May, our total revenues are about $29.5 million, which is a $1 million increase over the last fiscal year, last budget year. Looking at expenses, these are the changes that, from March, general government salaries and benefits went up about $104,000. That's due directly to two positions. When we went through the budget process, we found a position that was in utilities that actually belonged in the general fund, so we brought that back over into the general fund. And this past May, there was a position that was approved for Parks and Rec for, as a marketing coordinator. That, the money for that position was actually taken out of this line right here, operating expenses, and put up here in general government salaries. So, it's a net effect of zero going into this next budget year. Police salaries and benefits actually increased about $38,000. That's due to inner, internal promotions and new hires. Fire salaries and benefits, they actually decreased $84,000 over what we provided you in March, and that's due to retirements, internal promotions, and new hires coming in at the base rate, base level. Health insurance, workers' compensation, the vehicle replacement fund, and general insurance, these numbers will be updated as we go through the month of June. We're just a little bit too early on in the process yet, process yet, to finalize those numbers. Operating expenses went up about $137,000. That's directly related to an increase in legal fees of $47,000. Election expenses next year are for $22,000. We are buying or outfitting the police vehicles with e-printers, that's going to be another $21,000. We're updating our technology in the fire department with mobile data computer devices, that's another $33,000. And lastly, we hired six new firefighters this past year, and they need a second set of bunker gear, that'll be an additional $15,000, so that rounds out the $137,000. Next week, we need to discuss additional FTEs and capital expenses, so once we go through that process, we will update these numbers here. Our reserve for contingency remains the same at $450,000, which is $100,000 as a general contingency, $250,000 for facilities maintenance, and another $100,000 for anticipated retirements for next year. Total expenses come in at $31.2 million compared to $29.5 million in revenues. For any other adjustments, we have a deficiency of $1.7 million. Transfers in, transfers in have actually been reduced by $398,000, and that's because we still have to take a close look at what we're anticipating getting in from the Building Services Fund. We'll do that next month. I anticipate that number to be somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000. We still need approval from both the general council, the City of Oviedo Council, and the CRA Board for the contribution from the CRA for the OOTP debt, and we need to bring a resolution to you for transfer from the funds and forfeiture, excuse me, from the forfeiture fund, the DEA forfeiture fund, for helping out with the SRO officers, and we'll be doing that later this year. So, those numbers are actually brought back in down here in impact from selected options. Transfers out actually increased this year by $13,000, and that's because we are taking a look at replacing the old Tyco legacy security system here at City Hall in the Annex Building. And so, we took that money out of the general fund and actually put it into the IT Technology Fund. Transfers out debt decreased by $250,000, and that's again because we paid off that 2012 B revenue note this year. So, taking a look at that, we have a net shortfall bringing these transfers in and out, back into the previous deficiency of $1.7 million. That gives us a deficiency of $1.4. However, bringing back in the transfer in from the CRA for the OOTP debt, the funding of the SRO officers from the forfeiture fund, additional building fund money, that brings back in $344,000, which gives us a shortfall right now going into the month of June of about $1 million. Looking at our operating reserve, our operating reserve at the end of the year was $6.8 million. The shortfall or deficiency of $1 million brings us down to $5.7 million. The targeted fund balance for the GFOA best practices is 16.67%. We exceed that by $586,000, and we exceed our own policy at this point in time by $1.1 million. One thing I need to bring to your attention, though, is we're limited by our budget policy to only use 3% of budgeted revenues out of fund balance, which is about $885,000. So, this number currently exceeds that, which of course will massage that number as we go into the month of June.
Why are we limited to 3%?
That's the budget policy.
Oh, can we change that if we want?
It can be changed.
Okay.
So, with that being said, that's where we land with the budget, with the budget projections at the end of May. Are there any questions?
I just have one. You talked about an increase in legal fees, did that come out of operating expenses?
Yes, sir. No, it's part of our operating expenses.
I thought I heard you say there was a $137,000 increase, and it says 437 on this chart.
You're right. It's a $137,000 increase from what we gave you in the month of March.
Oh, okay.
That's the difference.
So, but the legal fee is a pay by hour, it's not a set rate?
Correct.
Or it's not the amount, is it? So, we could, is this just an estimate for our legal?
It's an estimate. It's a 10.
It's roughly a 10% increase to the hourly rate.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Boop, you were talking about the marketing coordinator position, came out of operating expense and went into salaries?
Yes, sir.
From the March one?
Yes, sir.
Because when you do the math, the, if you take the 645, 328, and subtract the 137, which you broke out in the memo as being the, what was it? The firefighter bunker gear and the e-printers and so on and so forth, when you do the math, you don't see a difference, that balances the difference between the March and the May.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And the reason for that is because we had other increases and decreases throughout the budget. We limited our increases to 6%. This gives us the number above the 6%. We took a very close look at 7212, and 7212, where the funding came from, remained flat. So, the increases actually came from other components of the budget. Another area of the budget that we had to look at very closely, I didn't mention here, is that watering, irrigation went up significantly as well. That's probably another $38,000 to $40,000. We just gave you the obvious ones that popped up from the month of March. But I assure you that the 7212 operations expense remained flat from the month of March in last year.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
I'm in good shape.
Something that we're looking at, and we're looking for your guidance on, is, Kelly, if we can go back up to the top, to the right, is something that we mentioned in the agenda memo, is we anticipate a geo-bond millage savings of approximately $45,000 as we, with the new property valuations, and I need to ask whether or not the council would approve using this geo-bond savings and actually keeping the overall millage rate the same and putting this number into the operating millage rate.
I think that's been the standard.
That's the deal.
Deal.
Okay. If we would like to do that, we will program that in in the month of June, and that number will actually increase the 922 by $45,000.
Really? I'd like to wait to see it begin, but it's been policy, so you can plug it in for now.
Okay. The other thing that we want to ask you, too, is will you consider going forward funding from the CRA for the OOTP debt? You know, we realize that needs to be approved by both boards, the General City Board and both the CRA Board, but we would like to know where you were leaning at this point in time, if that can be provided to us tonight.
I don't have an issue with that one. Yes, I think it's good, because I mean, you know...
That's what the CRA is for.
Right, exactly. Yes.
We have a 4-3 vote right there.
Yes, some, and some ain't going to like it, but you know what?
The CRA, Oviedo on the parks, a big driver of it, and we got to use the money to pay for the debt. This is common sense, but you're right, yeah, that might be a tough one.
Well, the money was used to complete OOTP, there's no doubt about that. It went into Brexton Moore. All right. Any other questions?
So, it sounds like you have about a million dollar delta to work on?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. And that's about $500,000 less than what you presented last year. Good job.
Well, the thing that we're looking at as well, too, is, Kelly, if you can go back over to the left, is...
At this time.
At this time. You know, is, if we, we're looking at this vehicle replacement fund number here, we have always shorted that, so we want to try and fund that if we possibly can going into the end of the process. In addition, it's no secret, we've not funded facilities maintenance correctly, so we are looking and scrambling for funds wherever we can find them to make a significant, a significant impact on facilities maintenance going into the next budget year. So...
Concentrate on that.
We are looking at it closely.
Good, good job.
Thank you.
Anything else, guys?
Good shape. Mr. Cobb, anything else with regard to the orders?
Actually, I do have a couple of questions for you, Mayor. One is, we need to have a voting delegate for the League of Cities. I know it's usually Mr. Britton, but I don't like to make the assumption that it's going to be Mr. Britton.
There it is.
Are you coming this year?
I'm still, I'm still up in the air on it, I just got to figure out if I can.
Well, you're the voting delegate if you come. There you go.
I'll do it, I do it every year. I'm going to be on the Transportation Committee again this year, so...
He's got to wake up early for it.
No, 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 it's like 10 o'clock now. You get to sleep in.
You got to wake up early for the breakfast.
Yeah, that was only the year I did, and they all took advantage of me, because what did I know? Oh, yeah, I'll do it. 6:30 in the morning. You can do it if you want.
Let me, let me see if I, because I've got some other time off around that time period, I don't know if I can make it or not.
If you need to...
This year, seriously, marry it, it's close to...
No, I've got some time, and when the form has to be sent in, I think I've, I've still got a couple of weeks before it has to go in, but...
It's a difficult move.
It is, stressful. You have to know how to... You just go, "Hi."
Just don't sit next to Mayor Lacy.
Yeah, he votes no on everything.
All right, I do have another question for you. We had a very good meeting with the consultants that are preparing the planning staff for State Route 434, and I asked them if they would come and do a work session with the City Council because they're getting ready to take this thing public, and I felt like you all needed to hear it before it goes public, so that when you get questions, that you'll be, you'll have the knowledge and be able to speak toward it. And I had some very pointed opinions about what they're proposing, but some of the things they had, they almost convinced me that it wasn't bad. They're willing to come in the month of June, and we've got June 10th and June 24th. June 24th is your big budget work session, so I usually try not to put other things on that agenda, but I know, Mayor, you're out June 10th.
I don't, I don't think council...
I'm not, I'm not in town either. Okay, so, they've agreed to come, we even got, we went up the, we went up the ladder asking all the way to DOT, asking that they be allowed to come in, and so, I can give them, if you don't mind having them come in June 24th, I'll add that to...
I will not be here that day, I already know I'm going on a business trip, but don't cancel for me, I'll get with you and look at it, or I'll get with you sometime.
All right.
You okay with that, Bob?
Yeah, I'll be available.
That's fine.
Are we able to start a little earlier, or is that hard on everybody?
5:30, 5:30 works for me.
Steve, you and I are usually pretty much...
Just let me know.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe start at 5:30 with them first.
Okay.
That way, we can give full attention to the budget.
Sure. You have some neat ideas. On the surface, when you look at them, you're going, "Are you guys out of your mind?", but then when they sit down and actually explain it to you, it starts to make...
Is that what I saw like 10 days ago?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, some of it is a little...
Yeah.
So, this is a project from 417 to Mitchell Hammock?
Yes, it's two projects. First project is from 417 down to Phase 1, to, at 426, and then the second phase is from 426 down to Mitchell Hammock.
But the actual construction of that thing won't be for 10 years, right?
We still would have to get, we got to go through the PD&E process, we still got to go through the right-of-way acquisition, the design, and metro plan.
They're trying to accelerate the north end.
Right. That's the priority.
That's the priority, because they have a lot of the right-of-way up there, or the right-of-way easily, more easily obtainable on the north end.
Right. So... I'll say this, you've often heard, well, you've heard me say it, that to go north and south, you have to go east and west in the city, and pretty much their models are showing people the movement's still east-west, so...
Anything else, Brian?
That's it, Mayor.
Do you have any update on the, I think you had a meeting with Republic, is there anything to report on that yet?
Yes, it was a good meeting. We are still learning, their proposal is really based on their accounting, and so right now, the proposal is for them, us, to directly pay items that are currently passed through to them. One, I'll give you an example, one of them's the landfill fee. Instead of them paying Seminole County, we would pay it directly. That helps their margin, is how it works. One of the things I, we need to do, we didn't get detailed costs from them on that, on that list of items, and so we're going to, we're going to get detailed costs from them, and then we're talking with Will Dan to come in and give us, okay, here's what, now that we know these costs, here's what the rate will look like. The, they, what they showed us, the starting point is around $19 a month already. That's the starting point. And so, that's not factoring in these other, these other costs. They're making the assumption that we would absorb those costs, and I don't know if we can do that, so we're going to, that's why we're looking at that right now. Patrick's working with Mr. Collins as well on the educational program, getting that, trying to get that rolled out as much as we can.
And then the, last we spoke with Don, the bear-proof cans for neighborhoods that want to operate... proof cans for neighborhoods that want to opt-in or folks, if we set up an area, they were gonna offer those, those folks who requested them at a couple of dollars a month. So, I'm assuming that's still
That's something that, we can still work that in, yeah. That's one of the things that we got to figure out on that. It could turn into a logistical quagmire, so we're trying to, trying to differentiate who has it, who doesn't, and so, but we're, that's, yeah, that's part of the program that we're
Right, you can go east of Lockwood, I think, is the delineation point that we started at.
Right.
They've been pretty active out of my way. Again, actually, one of the, one of the physicians out of First Choice, I saw Saturday, he was getting out of his car in the daytime
We beat the whole city.
Right in the heart of that plaza, and the bear charged him.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, he said, I beeped the horn, but he said, I was so scared, I was about ready to do the unthinkable, you know? I told Chief Coleman and stuff, and then they actually made a nice appearance down my street, ruined the block, turned everybody's garbage over last week. So, they're active. Mr. Cobb, I have one thing. You good?
I have another question on the garbage.
Go, go. Finish the garbage. This is something totally different.
I guess the trucking it out to the energy plant we went toward is out of the question, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I would love to, actually, that was one of the things Mr. Booth and I talked about, was taking the 95 acres and building a Covanta plant there, and because we could just hook right in
Have you guys ever
We could just hook it into
You might have heard of it.
to the substation there on 419.
They, Don Collins took Mr. Cobb, Mr. Patrick, and myself on a tour of a plant operated by a company called Covanta, and they burn all the garbage and turn it into electricity. And actually, Winter Park buys most, or
Right.
most of the electricity from that plant. It's not all the electricity they use, but just about everything that plant produces is bought by Winter Park. And it's clean burning, no emissions, no smell. I don't know what they do, but the whole plant smells like waffles, right? Didn't it?
Yeah.
It was quite the thing to say.
They, aluminum evidently falls through. It doesn't burn, and so they sell that.
Yeah, they recover all the precious metals. What'd they tell us, like $60,000 a year in coins fall through, or some, $5,000 a month in coins getting thrown away?
Where's the plant at?
Oka Humpka.
Oka Humpka.
Over towards Tampa?
Just keep taking the turnpike, and then you get off, and you're in Oka Humpka.
There you go.
Trip out of 75
And the plant's like it. The plant is Oka Humpka.
Yeah. But
The reason we went is they were considering if they could transfer the garbage there and eliminate all the tipping fees, but
Right.
by the time they pay the tipping fee there and get the garbage there
And the thing is, is what we were hoping
They don't want plastic.
100 percent. We just send everything there. This is 7,000 BTUs, and the
There was something else they didn't want.
It was zero. What was it?
Glass.
Glass. Glass is zero BTUs, and the flame has to be monitored and sustained at a certain temperature to burn everything correctly. So, if this goes in, it gets too hot. If glass goes in, it doesn't burn hot enough, so
So, they have to adjust the line, and then the problem they run into is they run the line for X number of tons coming in. They had, what was it, like five or six stories, eight stories down in the ground? They had, they dumped the garbage in, the garbage ferments, and then they got these cranes that like keep just turning it up and then dumping it in. It was cool to see.
Yeah, it was fascinating, and
It was fascinating to see, and it was amazing that the place did not smell at all.
So, we would still, what happened is for like plastics and glass, we would still have the recycling costs. And, you know, my hope was $92 a ton for the recycling, and then $30 a ton for the landfill, if we could get that
On staff.
if we could go up there for less, you know, than those two to get it, and plus, we'd be 100 percent recycling. But, yeah, as soon as he said that was 7,000 BTUs, I went, okay, we're done.
Right.
It was fascinating.
So, I just got one quick thing. Mr. Cobb, I was reading this email, I don't know if you all saw it, from our former colleague who used to sit up there with us, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just gonna say what I want to say. These emails are aggravating the hell out of me. Now, I think I've been here long enough to where you all know in this room, my staff, you guys, when somebody does a good job, I don't care if you have a bad day or whatever, you guys ain't going nowhere. Loyalty is everything. And by the way, you all do a phenomenal job, but this isn't about you. But we see this email from our former colleague questioning some legal fees, right?
Okay.
And she's building this case like her and her other people who are running for this office to get rid of people, and it's not happening. So, we give consultants three-year deals, we give our city manager the proper deals, all our staff. This is, I'm getting tired and weary of this. That's why I'm staying in, and I'm gonna run again because I'm tired of it. I'm just so tired of it. Mr. Colbert and Mr. Groot are not going anywhere. They have done a great job. I see here, you know, Bill had to up the fee a little bit. He is still $80 under an hour, under what the going rate would be if he used the high scale. So, I mean, while it's fine that she asks these questions, and these other people ask these questions, we really need to sit down with our city attorney. I mean, this, these two gentlemen have done such a phenomenal job for so long, and our former colleague really should have been censured or should have quit the night she went over his head and went to somebody to redo his work. We should have took some action that night, and we did not. I spoke up. There really is probably nothing we could do, but these emails are just getting aggravating. Certain members of our staff she doesn't like, our attorneys she doesn't like. This has got to stop, so I would say we need to talk to Mr. Colbert and Mr. Groot, and we need to bring something back, that they stay here and we show them some confidence in them, and they don't have to have this hanging over their head. There's no reason to make a change. They're still under what she fails to say, which you rightly pointed out. You know, we had a recession, and we had to cut all our fees. Mr. Colbert comes to the rescue, as does all our employees, and takes less, and now he needs a little bit more, and he's still so much under, but she has to question all of this. So, I think it's time that we sit down, and it's up to Bill, Bill and Lonnie, that we set up a, you know, a contract with them that goes a couple of years and show them our appreciation, because this aggravates the hell out of me. It really does.
I've spoken, thinking, Mr. Colbert, there's no interest.
He doesn't want to do it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If he doesn't want to do it, he doesn't want to do it. Well, good. I'm on the record to say that we support him and whatever because we know what the end game is here, and I don't appreciate it, you know? But send a message that we all support him.